Absolutely, Jimmy, I'd be happy to. So if you are here, just please respond with a "here" or "present" as I go down the list. So start with Ann Peltier.
Here.
Ryan Penning.
Here.
Dennis Gunnar.
Here.
Connie Lepine.
Here.
I know Jimmy's here. Mark Rom.
But it came through you.
And Steve Vogler.
They're both on.
Okay, thank you.
So did we hear from Steve Vogler?
Steve?
I believe we're missing Commissioner Rom and Commissioner Vogler then.
Rom just signed in.
Okay. So we're just missing Steve Vogler.
Okay.
Apologize, I was having connection difficulties.
Well, welcome aboard, everyone.
I am the one on phone.
First thing on the agenda tonight is approving the minutes for April 21st. Everybody had a chance to read this? I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from April 21st as presented. I'm sorry.
I think Janelle is talking probably to Vogler.
Some move.
Second.
So we have a... Ann, did you make the motion?
Yes.
And Mark, who was the second?
Mark.
Mark, okay, we have a we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call in favor. Janelle?
She's on Airline, what do you need?
Well, Kevin, last time we had a deal on the right where you could vote. I don't see that on my my screen.
So if you bring up, if you at the bottom of your screen for the commission members, remember if you pull up where it says "participants".
Yeah.
Click that, it should open up a box on the right listing the participants.
Oh, I got you.
And you should have you should have the button where you can raise your hand if the Chair so would like to use. And then the commission members can vote yes or no by toggling the button there, so.
Okay, I've got it now, thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote on that. Did everyone see the yes and the no on the right side? Would you please make your vote?
And Mr. Chair, just so you're aware, Commissioner Vogler is working, he's running into a little bit of a technical and Janelle's working with him to get him on. I can see if he had a vote on that.
We'll wait for that, but we've got a number-
I think you're good. You have plenty for that.
We have a majority vote on this.
That's correct.
Okay, so motion passes then. Tonight's hearing is quasi judicial public hearing on file number PA 20-01 Crooks Creek South petition continuation. Now what we're gonna do is we're gonna proceed with the public hearing, we'll take no testimony. We're gonna open the record and allow the applicant's letter entered and then we'll close that, so. Excuse me. I think at this time we'll have a staff report by Mr. Straight.
Okay, thank you Chair. So as the Chair pointed out, fellow planning commissioners, as this wrapped up last time and we continued it to today for additional deliberation, shortly after that we received a letter from the applicant's attorney and we would like that letter to be admitted into the record. We will need a separate motion to file and there is a motion in the staff report that has been provided to you and you might want to do that before we move on.
I move that we reopen the record and case number PA 20-01 for the single purpose of accepting a letter from the applicant's attorney dated May 5th, 2020. And upon entry of that letter in the record, the record should then again be closed, so we may deliberate.
And who was that?
Mark.
Commissioner Rom.
Excuse me. I'll say Mark made the motion and opened it and we need a second.
Second. Ann.
That was Ann.
Ann.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, so the record is now open and...
At this point, we will have Jake send that letter off to all the planning commission members, so keep an eye on your email and we should have that in front of each of you in just a moment. Just to clarify, did the commissioners get a copy of that letter in advance? Or have you not seen-
I didn't.
I did not.
That's what I thought, terrifying. All right, Jake, you sitting that out right now? It's gonna be coming from Janelle, but you'll have it any moment.
Okay.
Once the planning commission gets that letter, we can take a small give the planning commission an opportunity to read that, or I can go through the letter for you and explain to you how we're addressing that and how we think it can be addressed moving forward.
I would like for you to do that, please.
Well, Janelle is getting that together. The letter basically indicates that there was an issue with the the case processing. And the way we process the case as opposed to using a limited land use decision, we've brought this before you today as a quasi judicial case because our ordinance gives us the option of doing that. And so we figured it was better to go with a quasi judicial than a limited land use decision because that gives the public a better opportunity to weigh in. The letter from the applicant's attorney indicates that that is the incorrect process to use and is inconsistent with state law. And so we're gonna go into that a little bit later tonight during item E on the agenda. And you received a memo from us to that effect previously. And we'll go into that on E, it doesn't really pertain to this as we're gonna talk- The letter then also went into a number of different criteria applications and how we applied our criteria. It brought attention to the fact that we might not have given enough consideration to the needed housing act as part of this. And you'll remember from before, when you involve the needed housing act, a lot of discretionary ability for the planning commission kind of goes by the wayside because we have to have clear and objective criteria and we can only apply clear and objective standards as opposed to using something more discretionary. And so in our staff report, we actually explained that where the ability to exercise discretion on a criteria or a proposed condition of approval, the needed housing act does not allow that criteria or condition to add time or expense to the proposed project. And as we said in the original staff report, staff gave a choice whether we should build the road or not build the road. Staff heard on the side caution and said it would be better to not require the road to be built. And we gave a list of reasons why. In the May 12 staff report that we've distributed to you, we've reiterated some of those reasons and built up upon them in light of the needed housing act, and so that's in the staff report before you today. The applicant has indicated that as long as we move forward without the requirement for the road, that the concerns expressed in the attorney's letter are addressed. And so it's our recommendation to the planning commission tonight, we move forward with the recommendation to not have the road be part of it. And we've included in our staff report revised conditions of approval that go that route. They basically just edit out the other option for building the road and these are our recommended conditions of approval. In addition, before we move too far off of that, we passed out a second amendment to the planning commission earlier tonight and Mr. Soren and Mr. Helms, I don't believe we got a copy of this to you yet, but it shouldn't be foreign when I explain what it is. When the applicant brought the application in and we were preparing the staff report, they approached us and asked if they could switch out their exhibits because they came up with an exhibit that they preferred. And staff indicated that we would be happy to add that to the staff report, but then before the staff report went out, we goofed and didn't include it. And so what we're doing tonight by way of this memo that was distributed just about an hour ago to the planning commission, and I'll show you what this does specifically, let me share my screen here. By way of this memo, we are asking that the planning commission switch out the exhibit that we provided previously for this one. Now the only difference here is before the hammerhead was here at the end of the road and the applicant has now moved the hammerhead down to be just off of Trask. So this would require a lot less construction on the applicant's part. The applicant has left a 52-foot access easement going all the way to the end of this parcel should a road be needed in the future, that access will still be there. But the actual construction of the hammerhead, which could eventually be temporary in nature, would be right down here at Trask and not up in the middle of the project instead. And so we meant to include that in our staff report. Janelle and I have both looked at it and both see any issues with it from staff's side, we think it meets all the criteria and requirements and standards of the city. We just omitted it accidentally. And so we're any action that you take tonight, we would request that the planning commission take the action on the exhibit you see on your screen before you instead. Besides that, there's no other differences. So with that, Wally is with us as well. One of Millersburg's attorneys, and I think I covered everything I needed to, but Wally, feel free to chime in if I missed anything.
No, I think you covered it. The critical issue that we want to emphasize for the commission tonight is the needed housing act and as you know from the manufactured home park, it severely restricts our ability to exercise discretion. And in reviewing this, the pathway to Luba doesn't look very good if we impose the road condition. And so our strong recommendation is to go with the staff recommendation which includes that option two, which is condition number four.
So with that, staff concludes our presentation. We're here for any questions you might have and as is the applicant. Although, they close the public hearing. Sorry.
Okay. So we're gonna close the record now, is that it? Forrest, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me check my paperwork here just a second.
At this point, you would just enter deliberations amongst the planning commission members.
Right. Okay, now they can still ask questions from you as a staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so now we'll enter-
Wally or Kevin or Janelle.
I'm sorry?
Any one of the staff members, be it Forrest or Wally or Kevin or Janelle.
Okay. So we'll go into deliberation then and we'll turn it over to the members. And anyone wanna discuss this, any questions? Now's the time.
I have a question about the two pages of the plat that I got.
Correct.
They don't look a whole lot different, yet at the top of the property information, they're entirely different.
Well, the lines you see are the same, they're just communicating different information. See, this one is communicating where the wetlands are
Yeah.
and floodplain lines are and that kind of information. The property line delineations are identical. This one up here is just showing topography as opposed to the natural features.
Right, I understand that. But at the top of my page, it has property information. One has 4.4 acres and one has 6.30 acres. Page one had 6.3 acres.
Oh, yeah, that's the typo.
Okay, okay. That's good to know.
We'll get that fixed up on the final plat.
Anyone else? Well, if there's no more discussion, I will entertain a motion based on staff report and recommendation, so anybody wanna make a motion?
Well, I have one question, Jimmy.
Okay.
So you all know how I voted last time and my biggest reason was because you have parcel three and parcel two coming off of Trask. So parcel two can partition in the future, subdivide, whatever. Parcel three cannot. So what we had for a motion last time was that we would do a private road and that parcel two and parcel three would have a non-remonstrance agreement. I'm probably not saying that quite right. And
That was correct.
So if parcel two ever decides to subdivide, partition, whatever, and the road needs to be put in, both parcel two and all those lots and parcel three would then have to pay for that road. So my biggest pushback is the fact that parcel three is not the one subdividing, but yet they're gonna have to pay. That was probably the crux of why I voted no. So I have a problem with that. I think that if parcel two partitions or sub divides, whatever, that parcel two should be on the hook for the whole road cost, not parcel three. And that was why I was pushing so much for the developer just to pay it and have it done and then we wouldn't have to do this later. Does any of that make sense what I said?
That does make sense that parcel three and parcel two both pay their fair share if and when a road was ever required through there. And that idea is that we're not taking the end down the road and forcing whoever subdividing parcel two to bear in a disproportionate share of the cost of the road when it was time to build one, if it was ever time to build one.
Well, but is it fair for parcel three to have to pay it when parcel two's gonna be making money off of the whole thing and they're gonna be able to take a part of their profit off of subdividing and pay for that road? And parcel three is just gonna have to come up with the money and I don't know how much money that would be, but I'm sitting here thinking I don't think I would wanna be on the hook for that because the guy next door to me is going to be making a profit. I don't think that's right.
Indeed.
Well, if you removed all references to the waivers of remonstrance, then parcel two would be carrying, whoever subdivided parcel two in the future would be carrying all the costs of the street, that's true.
So can we then, because I would be okay with what we're doing if parcel three took the whole load of the cost. If they ever subdivide, then they have to pay the whole road and parcel three doesn't. Now, I understand what you're saying about parcel three is going to gain something out of this, but parcel three is just gonna have to fork out money and parcel two is gonna have a profit to do it with. So that's where my pushback is.
How do you figure two's gonna get a profit from building a road?
No, no, they're getting a profit from subdividing and selling lots.
Right.
Yeah.
But they all enjoyed the roads that got them to where they're at now and they didn't pay for them.
You mean the private road?
Any of the roads. Old Salem Road, Millersburg Road, Alexander Road. To get to those lots, they've all enjoyed access without having to pay for them.
And it's not like somebody's living on parcel three where they're gonna have to come up with money later. They'd go in there knowing they're gonna have to pay for that.
With the remonstrance.
Right.
Well, parcel three though is just gonna have to go get it out of their bank account if they have it, or we're gonna have to put a lien against their property when they sell it.
No, that's just part of their property cost when they go to build.
Well, I don't agree with it, I'm sorry. That's I would be totally okay with this whole thing if parcel two took all of the cost.
No, don't like that at all.
Okay. No one else feels that way, or am I the only one?
I think we need the remonstrance in it. You know, I think that has to be first and foremost so that people know what they're getting into.
Okay, but Ann, do you think parcel three should have to pay for part of the road when they have to make it 52 feet wide?
I don't I don't It wouldn't be a disproportional amount, I would think.
No, it wouldn't be. They're only gonna pay for the percentage that goes by their place, they're not gonna pay me pay you know, for a percentage for the whole thing, it's just a percentage of their property.
Yeah, the guy'll just raise the price of the lot if he has to put in the parcel two has to put in the road itself, he's just gonna add that cost to parcel three when he sells it.
Well, you're right, because if if the road was required, then he'd just up the price.
Exactly.
So the builder, one way or the other, is gonna pass it on.
Exactly.
And whoever buys this lot is basically at one point or another gonna pay for that road.
Exactly. And they know it's a front-
You mean parcel three will have to pay for it?
A portion, just their portion.
But why should he have to pay if parcel two's the one subdividing? We're talking a year from now, okay? When parcel two says, I'm gonna subdivide, I'm going to partition three lots and now we're gonna make them put in that road, why would parcel three have to pay for it?
All they're gonna pay all they're gonna pay for is the frontage that goes in front of their place, their lot.
How much money is that?
I have no idea.
Can we get an answer to that from the-
Connie, here's the deal. I'm the developer and I pay for that road. Somehow, when I go to sell that property, half of that road is gonna go in the parcel three's cost of that property, no matter what.
Yeah, but we're talking, this could be a year down the road when there's already a house on this and people are living there.
But they know that going in. They know that going in when they buy the lot.
Connie, to answer your question on the is it a half width roadway is about, what, 350 feet per foot?
Right.
Is that correct?
I don't know, we're not getting that.
Yeah, Forrest, it's 147 is what our calculator is, feet per foot of frontage per side. So for 100 how far is this?
105.
105.
Do you wanna share that?
It's about 15,000.
It's about 15,000 for the street. Now that does not the city services that would need to go in here are already required under the conditions of approval for water and sewer to go in, so only looking at the street cost and that would be, actually, you need to add in the stormwater as well, so it would be about 23,000.
Share that so they can see.
I can share this. Just a second, I gotta change my order to share.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, Connie, what it boils down to the owner's gonna pay for it, either pay for it when they buy the lot or later. The only difference is cost of the place. So.
I don't think that's the case, because the private road right now, if parcel two does not ever subdivide, there won't need to be a road there. What are they gonna have to pay now for the private road? The same thing?
Or whatever the developer will install road and that will be reflected in the cost of the lots. And you're right, if nothing ever subdivides and no road ever goes in, then a road wouldn't be needed, that's true.
Okay.
But I think it is to take the cost of that road in the future and divide it evenly over everybody who has a benefit from that road and parcel three would have a benefit and therefore requiring them to be a party two paying for that road when it gets built, if it gets built.
So what you're saying is if parcel two says, I'm gonna subdivide and parcel three needs to come up with $23,000 out of their pocket?
That is correct. Well, not 23, whatever the street is alone.
Stormwater's part of it too.
Okay.
So $24,000 they're gonna have to come up with.
No, 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 no.
Any more thoughts on this?
Lot two divides for a lot corner, that now puts three houses on the driveway and that's still legal down the street. Then lot four decides he wants to divide again and that's gonna put five. Is the needed housing act going to come into play? Are we gonna get hit with this again where it says that it doesn't allow criteria to add time or expense to the project? No, that wouldn't come into play because that's a clear and objective standard. Thank you.
I didn't understand that question. What was that question?
What was that? Dennis, what was the question again?
My concern was when lot two divided into lot four, now we have three houses on the driveway, that's still legal. Then lot four decides to subdivide, is the needed housing act going to come into play there where we can't add cost to his project and it's going to be $75,000 for him to run a street for his additional now lot five? And that's too much money and the needed housing act is gonna say, oh, you can't do that. Has this needed housing act destroyed the entire last year and a half of our planning?
Wally, can you answer that?
Well, it has disrupted our process and our thinking, that is for sure. But the saving grace and the answer to the question as to what happens down the road is our rule that allows three houses on a private drive is clear and objective and so it passes muster under the needed housing act because there's no discretion. There's three houses or there isn't three houses. And so that we would be able to apply our requirements and conditions without fear of the needed housing act at that point down the road.
That answer your question, Dennis?
Not to my satisfaction, but that's okay.
Well.
I can say we have clear, clear, objective reasons for asking for a street there. We spent if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, we don't call it a pigeon, but we're gonna call this a pigeon. I'm with Connie, I don't think it's fair for one lot to be able to sell five other lots, gain all of that profit and get get another fellow just having that financial sword hanging over his head for however long it takes.
Well, you gotta remember, one of the conditions of approval over this-
No financial gain whatsoever.
Okay. You gotta-
Assuming that the builder's even able to sell parcel three, that could be such an albatross around its neck that he never sells it.
It could also be 2,000 square foot lots are more profitable and we better have that for the needed housing act. And now we're gonna have 15 houses on a private driveway. There's a lot of what ifs and we tried to avoid that in this last year and a half as we crafted this new code.
That is true, but the conditions listed on the acceptance of this right now says that if bills past three homes, he has to put a road in. That's the condition of approval right now. And that's all we got to go by.
Perfect.
True, but what it's saying is that we're doing a remonstrance for parcels two and three. And that's still, I'm still saying I would like to always be a parcel two.
Wally, are there any caveats to placing that on one parcel rather than on both?
Well, the remonstrance should go on both parcels. I think the planning commission has the ability under the second sentence about allocation of costs. Let me pull it up here. The waiver of remonstrance-
The waiver of remonstrance shall require parcels two and three to participate in future road construction. I, I think the planning commission has the ability to, in that last sentence, make that only apply to, to parcel two. But the remonstrance in the prior sentence should apply to both two and three.
So what would the mons, the monsters do for three if they're not going to be paying the cost? What's the purpose of it then?
It prohibits them from objecting or from LID. There's a, there's a lot of particular legal provisions. Basically, it's a, it's a gag order, is the way I always look at it. They are accepting the fact that there will be a road there, and that they're not going to have the ability to complain about it.
So basically, they're just agreeing to the easement, is what you're saying?
Well, they're agreeing to the fact that in the future, the easement might be turned into a public road.
Right.
And they can't complain about that. They have to.
Right.
Have it go by their house.
Right.
So I guess, on. So where is the access to parcel three? Is that on that private road?
That's the way I'm reading it.
Yes, the access, this is Trask coming up here.
Yeah.
And then Trask coming up this way, and then they would just access it from this hammerhead right here. They would just come in, turn right into their property, and parcel two would come in, turn right into their property. If the road was ever built to go straight, these sections here, you see in the wings of the hammerhead, would cease to function as a fire emergency, because this road would be built, and they would have to rebuild it, turn around it.
Matt, what's the distance of that hammerhead from the parallel road?
You mean from the tip of lot three to the end of the hammerhead?
The hammerhead.
I think what he's asking is what's that line, you know, where the 103, 52, and 125, that area there? What, what is that? Is that? I don't know what it is.
You mean this bend here?
No, no, no. That whole area, that whole long rectangular area that goes.
This area here?
No, 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 right below. See where the 103, 52, and 125? That area in there, all that.
Well, this gray line is just one that was accidentally written on the exhibit.
Okay, okay, that's confusing.
It's a part of the applicant's exhibit.
Okay. Because those are, those are just the properties next to it.
Yes, correct. That exists, that are being built today.
Okay.
Trask is completed, this house is almost done. This house hasn't started construction yet, I don't believe.
One on the left?
Correct. Have, have you started? Have a foundation board? Oh, okay.
So Trask is, is a fully paved city road?
Yeah, that's been accepted already, right, yeah. Up to the property line here that you see for the 103.
Right here, right.
Okay.
Well, can I make a stab at a motion? Are we there yet?
Anybody have objections? Go ahead, Connie, I'd entertain a motion.
So I'm going to read what we have here, and then I'm going to just change a few words. I move approval of partition application number PA 20-01, based on the findings of facts and conclusions in the April 14, 2020 staff report. Subject to the conditions of approval set forth below, which supersede the proposed conditions listed in the April 14 staff report. Including general condition number four, which does not require the construction of a new road to serve the proposed lots, with a change that parcel three would be the only one. It would have a waiver of remonstrance for both two and three, but parcel three would be the only one that would participate in future road construction costs.
I think you've mixed.
Go, go ahead, Matt.
I think you've mixed up parcel two and three in that last part of your motion, because you just put all the costs on parcel three, which I don't think you want.
Oh, I said it backwards. Do I need to redo the whole thing? I will.
Why don't you? Okay, why don't you correct your motion?
So correct it as far as I want parcel two to be the only one that participates in future road construction costs? Do you want me to read the whole thing again? I'll.
No, I'm good with, I'm good with that. So we want the record to reflect, though, that basically under paragraph four, the condition four, you are just eliminating that in that last sentence. It's saying the waiver of remonstrance shall require parcel two to participate in future road construction costs.
Of course, it's all, it's above that in four.
Say it again.
Sorry.
So can we, just to clarify real quick a question, the last sentence says the waiver of remonstrance shall require parcels two and three to participate in future road construction costs. And you would like to change that to eliminate the smaller parcel, which is parcel three. However, the questions for Wally in four, if you take one parcel out, the cost is already borne by parcel two if they, in the future, if they divide. So is there any reason to leave that sentence at all? Or does it just confuse things?
I, I think it, it clarifies the fact that it's the planning commission's intent. If this is passed, then parcel two pay for all of the future road improvements. So I think, I think clarifying that is, is good rather than confusing. So if that's the will of the planning commission, I think the, the sentence should stay in there.
Sentence should stay in, but with the elimination of the number three, is that correct, Wally?
Yeah, if that, if that's how the planning commission votes, sure.
Yeah, I think that's what Commissioner Lapine was saying. Is that what you, is your motion, this, Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Could you read her, her sentencing again, the last part? What she ended, what Connie ended?
My, well. Jake, do you have that, Jake?
Well, there's a handful of things going on there, but I kind of abbreviated it as, with a change that parcel two would bear all the cost of future road construction. But I was going to get it word for word when I reviewed the recording.
That's basically it, okay.
And with the intent, my, let me clarify what I believe Commissioner Lapine's intent is to, to simply eliminate the number three in the last sentence. So the last sentence would say the waiver of remonstrance shall require parcel two to participate in future road construction costs.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Does everybody understand that now? Does anybody want to make a second on this?
I second.
Who is I?
Ryan Penning.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this before we ask for a vote?
I'm still not sure why someone who is going to get the benefits of a paved road should not have to pay something.
Exactly.
I mean, whether they want a paved road or not, I mean, it would be nice to, everybody gets their own private drive. But I, I just, I, I understand the, what do I want to say? The fairness of not having them pay tons of money, but they're only paying their cost, I mean, their proportion.
What is their advantage to having the paved road? They're going to have a paved driveway and paved access to their house. They really gain a sidewalk in front of their house, and that's really it.
I can kind of see where, as it is right now, they're gonna, they've got a paved driveway or paved road up to the front of their lot. So to run it on past their house, why, I, I can't see why they should have to brunt a lot of that finance, just to run it past the side of their house to feed the lots behind them. I'm, I'm kind of seeing what Connie's saying, that if, if I bought that lot, I would have a problem having to pay to run a road past my house when it really doesn't serve me.
Well, and you could be the second owner five years from now when it happens, and that sword's hanging over your head.
Right.
We had a developer last month that was really quite up in arms over how much this stuff costs. He even offered to threaten not to come back to Millerburg to build. I don't know that we want to hang that over an individual owner.
Ryan, you got anything to say?
Well, it's plus like Mark said, you know, that's the, the ability to sell that front lot, knowing that when you buy this, you're going to have to pay in whatever, $23,000 in the future, should they decide to put a road past your house. That, that would stop a lot of people, I think, from wanting to buy that lot, which would make it hard to sell.
Well, actually, this, this is done all the time, actually, in reality. For me, I think it's only fair that everyone pays their fair share, but we're going to put this to a vote then. So now's the time to cast your ballots. You vote for this motion or vote against it?
Is this a verbal vote?
No, up on the right side where your name is, there, down below, there's a green, or a red note. So pick, just take your, there you go.
So we're voting now?
Yeah, we're voting. Except my vote's not showing. Okay, hold on. Well, I'm reading a three to two vote.
I, I'm not. One just disappeared. Let me see, one, two, three, four, oh, let me see, one, two, three, no, okay, we've got seven. So I show, I see three in favor and four against, is the way. Jake, what are you?
I have Commissioner Ryan Penning in favor, Connie Lapine in favor, and Dennis Gunner in favor. And I have Jim Kirkendall in against, and Peltier against, Steve Vogler against, and Mark Rom against.
Oh, Chair, I'm saying that motion failed, four to three, or three, yeah, three to pass, four against it.
Okay, I don't, I don't have all of those on my screen, but you say now, say that again. What was the vote?
The motion did not pass, it was defeated. Three people voted for, four voted against it.
Okay, then the motion fails.
Yes. And Chair, if, what I suggest, if you can't see everybody on that participants, sometimes if you put your, scroll your arrow down to the lower right-hand side and pull that down further, you may be able to see all of the participants. Enlarge in the box.
Oh, we pulling that down?
Go to the lower right-hand side. Click on that lower right-hand side, and that will enlarge the box.
Oh, okay. I got it.
With the number of participants we have, you may not be able to see them all on one screen, but if you hover over the right side, there's a bar, and you can scroll up and down, and then you can see everyone.
Okay. Okay. Well, that motion failed, I would entertain a new motion.
Mr. Chair.
If anybody wants to make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendations, well, you're free to do that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the partition application number PA 20-01, based on the findings of fact and conclusions in the April 14, 2020 staff report. Subject to the conditions of approval set forth below, which supersede the proposed conditions listed in the April 14 staff report. Including general condition number four, which does not require the construction of a new road to serve the proposed lots.
My second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, let's cast our ballots then. So can you read the final tally here?
Jake, can you read that out, please?
Yep, I was just recording them real quick. So, and what I'm gathering, we have Chair Kirkendall is a yes, Commissioner Gunner is a no, Commissioner Lapine is a no, Commissioner Peltier is a yes, Commissioner Penning is a yes, Commissioner Rom is a yes, and Commissioner Vogler is a yes.
Is that all? Commissioners, is that accurate, the way you voted?
Yes.
Yes.
So the Chair, sounds like it passed the most, five to two.
Okay, it looks like the motion passes then. So this actually would conclude the business we've had tonight. We'll, we'll follow with the staff report here in a minute. If there's any appeal to be made, you have 15 days to appeal it. And let's go to the staff reports then, Matt. Or city planner update, I'm sorry.
City planner update, I knew what you meant.
I got it wrong, I looked the wrong thing.
Thank you, Chair, fellow commissioners. As somewhat of an outgrowth of what we received on the application that we just talked about, it's been brought to our attention that some of our processes that are in our code and have been in our code for quite some time, could potentially be inconsistent with state law. And so we are proposing, we're not proposing, we are going to be changing our processes moving forward, and it's our intention to make sure that these changes are reflected in the new code as well. And what this means is that our code currently, when somebody comes in with a land division of any kind, be it a partition or a subdivision, our code gives us the option of processing that as a limited land use decision to the planning commission, or we can take this a quasi judicial case to the planning commission. Now, there's not much of a difference between those, except for the fact that the public can weigh in and give testimony on a quasi judicial hearing, and they wouldn't have the chance to do that in a limited land use meeting before the planning commission. Well, the errors that we've found in our code indicate that we have to process all land use divisions as limited land use decisions at the staff level only, and they don't go to the planning commission. And our code must be predating the changes in state law? I'm not sure, but, so from now on, when a land use decision comes in, we're going to be processing that at the staff level only, and the planning commission will no longer see partitions or subdivisions at all, unless they're appealed, in which case they would go to the planning commission on appeal. on appeal.
Okay. Anybody got any questions they want to ask, Matt?
So with this one that we just did, how would that have come out? The staff would have-
Would have been made at the staff level. And what that means is we would take in the application, we would still review it, we would send it out for agency review to everybody else. We would notify the neighbors around the project to give them an opportunity to weigh in. And then staff would make a decision on that. We'd still write a staff report. We'd still explain how they meet the findings. There would still be a, a staff report that goes along with the decision. And when the decision is made, we would just notify the applicant and any other parties of the decision. And it would never go to the planning commission unless it was appealed by the applicant.
So the planning commission would learn of these new partitions after they were already approved?
No, we won't even hear them.
You will still get notice of them. We'll still bring a notice of what happened at the staff level. You'll get that during the city planner update.
But it doesn't be, it doesn't sound like we're going to be having very many meetings. So it could be that it's six months later that we have a meeting and that's, at that point, we're going to be hearing about it?
Well, we could take the notice of decision and then send that to each planning commissioner individually. That wouldn't be administratively a very difficult thing to do.
You just get it in the mail in that case, though, not on an agenda or in an official capacity.
And what is the purpose of that? Why are we not just disbanding? You, you've eliminated our reason for being.
Commissioner Gunner, it's not that we did it. It's what the state legislature has done.
You didn't do it out of the goodness of your heart, but you have allowed us to have Tuesdays off. Thank you. I have enjoyed telling you this.
An occasional Tuesday off.
Well, we would still, we would still hear it if anybody appealed. Is that right, Matt?
Yes.
Correct, correct. Appeal. And the planning commission would still hear quasi judicial, like conditional use permits, or even legislative matters would still go through the planning commission, and then they would make recommendations to the city council. So the planning commission would still hear applications and projects, just not land divisions.
Let me ask you. We've got, we've got something on the next month's schedule? Or do you know?
I don't believe that, Jake, I don't think we have anything else going soon. We have a couple of applications that we're processing, but they don't have hearing dates yet.
Right. We, we have some applications we're pending, but we don't have, I don't think, I think we have letters of incompleteness still out on them. We don't have a completed application with a hearing date yet. No.
Yeah, we have a tight design review will still be coming to you. It's not needed housing. I should also clarify that there are land divisions that aren't residential. And those will still be coming to the planning commission because they're not needed housing. So those will still follow the process we have in our, in our ordinance right now, which is the fact that they go to planning commission. But if they're needed housing and residential, they wouldn't.
So how long has this state thing been going on? Just since the needed housing legislation or?
Well, Wally and Forrest are probably much more suited to answer that question, but the needed housing provisions have been around for some time.
Forrest, for Wally, would you like to explain why, what's happened, why that changed, why we have to make that change?
Well, the, the staff report lays it out pretty well. The, the problem comes in with the definition of limited land use. And then when you, when you get down into 197, 522, it basically says that if you are doing a partition or a subdivision for needed housing, it has to be processed as a limited land use decision. The definition of limited land use decision is, as Matt explained, it's a staff decision with the ability to appeal to the planning commission, rather than a staff recommendation with the decision from the planning commission. The, the needed housing rules have been around for 12 years, I think. Limited land use decisions have been around for probably 16 years. But for the first 10 years or so, nobody paid much attention to them because they, they were different than everybody's code. But with the addition of the needed housing emphasis that's been happening lately, limited land use procedures have gotten revived, if you will. So that's, you know, we're, we're catching up. A lot of the cities have already made the switch over to staff decisions on these cases. And we're, we're working through it and trying to get in compliance. And the new code will take care of that as well.
I'll be interested to see how other, other cities bear with this too. Interesting.
There will also be, going forward, once we'll do a needed housing survey basically for the city, and in some of the areas that needed housing is not found, then, then will that come in that situation, Wally? Then that will come before the planning commission. Is that correct? If it's not in a needed housing area?
Yes. Well, and, and some of it will depend on how we word the new code.
Yeah.
But right now, because the city does not have a needed housing analysis, the law says that all of your residential land is needed housing. You can't make a differentiation because you don't have any statistics, facts to back it up. When you do do that needed housing analysis, it will give you areas where there is a need for housing and areas that there is not a need for housing. In other words, it'll classify those. And some, some needed housing analysis will make two or three different levels of requirements. Until we have that report, everything is needed housing. And after we get the report, and typically when the report comes in, there are recommendations for how to change the code to implement the needed housing analysis.
Okay, thank you, Wally. Anybody else got any comments before we close the meeting? Well, then the meeting is adjourned as of eight, or 7:05. Thank you. You can leave the meeting by, down the bottom corner down there, by clicking out.